Okay, I'll call this Board of Selectmen needing to order for Tuesday, March 30. We'll call, we have Donald Poole, myself, Pam Alley, Phil Crossman, and Jake Thompson attending remotely. Approve agenda, are there any additions or attractions? Yeah, move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole, all those in favor? And Jake, if you would say yea or nay. Let's move on, just note that Jake abstained from the vote. Minutes, we have several meetings. Prove the minutes from the March 8 meeting. Oh, second in motion. All those in favor? And Jake, if you'll say yea, please. Or nay?
Yea.
The March 10 meeting. Oh, second that motion, all those in favor?
I wasn't at that one, I don't think.
Okay, so Jake will say the March 16 budget committee meeting. Remove, oh, second that motion, all those in favor?
I approve.
And the March 16 selection meeting. Two meetings that same night. So moved. Seconded by Donald Poole, all those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, approved and signed treasures warrant number 39, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole, all those in favor?
Yes.
We do, now I have a communication here, I bring it up and under my reported numbers, as I forgot to amend the agenda. So we'll go to speakers from the floor. Anybody? Concerns, questions? Compliments?
I don't think we've ever gotten that.
Okay, we'll go on to committee and department reports and appointments, standing and community development.
Hi there, I'm gonna do a little screen share. Oops, if I can remember how to do a screen share, you'd think I'd know by now. Let's try that one more time. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. So. Um, we wanted to just give an update on the downtown project funding, um, just sort of where things are at and bring some new information forward for you guys. Um, and Andy, Andy might have things to add to this as well. So, um, as you know, we talked about, um, the grant that we've applied for for the past two years, but haven't been quite ready to receive it. Even though we've gotten in the pipeline, um, in terms of applying, so that's Northern Borders Regional Commission or NBRC. And, um, that has a cap at $1 million. So we've applied, um, for, well, we haven't applied yet, the deadline is May 14th for that, but you have to submit a letter of interest, which we did, that was on Friday. And, um, I just wanna just go over with you guys what that looks like. So this is, um, if you recall, what we submitted in terms of our, um, economic development administration, uh, grant for 1.9 million. And, um, so when we did that, as if you can recall, we needed to cut out, um, a part of the original infrastructure proposal, which 1, 2, 3, there was a number 4. And, um, we needed to do that because, um, Alan Brigham, who is the, um, person who is presenting this to the, uh, commission that, that either approves or denies this funding. Wanted to get us down to a $1.9 million ask, so that's what you see here. So the total match, um, contributed by the town is this $1,103,000. So that's what we agreed on and you approved. So this was the proposal we submitted for, for EDA. So our plan sort of all along was to bring this number 4 back into the equation when we applied, uh, for Northern Borders. So what you're seeing here is the full, uh, downtown infrastructure project as it originally was, with one exception, which I'll explain in just a second. So we've added number 4 back in. So originally, number 4 was G and H, which totaled $720,000. So that's what we cut from the project originally. Now looking at the project, um, along with Woodard and Kern, uh, one of the suggestions was to, um, enhance some of the areas that would support the fishing community. And I know that we have the harbor plan, um, that is being, going to be finalized, um, in the coming months. And that will have recommendations for a lot of improvements that are on the, um, uh, the fish plant end of things, uh, side of town, uh, more in the, um, the, uh, working waterfront district. So what, what we've done in terms of downtown with recommendation from Woodard and Kern is look at including some funding for the boat launch in the downtown parking lot. So, um, what that does is add $186,800 to the proposal. And so NBRC is 100, uh, excuse me, is a maximum request of $1 million. So, um, this would put, as you, you'll see over here, this would put a requirement for additional funds coming from the town of $88,160. So Andy can probably speak a little bit more about where this could come from and how this might work. There are, um, a couple of options in terms of sort of, you know, if we get this funding, if we don't get this funding. Um, but maybe I'll just, Andy, do you want to just speak to what you were thinking about with this, um, with the 88,000?
Sure, so, um, fixing the infrastructure along the waterfront is something we know we have been wanting to get to doing. And the thought was we'd apply for a ship grant, um, to do the boat boat launches and the repiling, um, you know, down at the fish plant. So, um, with the need to, you know, strengthen the economic development ties to this grant opportunity. I said, well, what if we add one of those in there and we could potentially look at using some of the harbor reserve money as part of our map? We do have some in the reserve. Um, so obviously it would only be one of the three pieces that we didn't want to get to in the near term. Um, but if there's a way to put up, well, the $88,000 and get a million back from it, it seems like a pretty good opportunity to get everything we were setting out to do. That was, you know, very comfortably, we could take and utilize that harbor reserve money as part of our match for this, um, no additional tax impact.
So the, based on this proposal, the total to the town is about 1.2 million, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's, this is what we're looking at, total match from the town, about 1.2, correct?
We've already committed to 1.1, right? So the 88 is the extra ask, but do you think we can get additional grant funding after we make that commitment, do I have that right?
So the putting up that is, what we're asking for is a million dollars, right? From NBRC, our contribution to that, that section of that project project, David highlighted at 1.088, 160. We put up to 88, 160, because that's above the 1 million that they would potentially give up.
Okay.
Um, so that would be our contribution for that section four, or part four of that project that you see on the screen. And then we can continue on and then another year or two to try and get the other infrastructure pieces on the waterfront. Do another meeting.
And I'll just put out there too, that we're looking at, um, some additional funding that's earmarked, um, through Congress. And that's, um, an application that we would be going through Shelley Pingree's office, um, to apply for. Um, it's, you know, all of these things, as we know, I mean, we're, we're poised in, in a way because we're, we're very, you know, this is like project ready, there's match in place. And, you know, basically, once we get the funding, we're ready to go. So the, it's attractive because of that. Brent, um, has identified two, Brent for Woodard and Kern has identified two projects in the state of the main, in the state of Maine that he would propose to Shelley Pingree. And he feels that our project has, is a very strong proposal. So that's an up to $1 million. Um, so we're also, you know, going to be submitting for that earmarked funding as well. And I just say that because, you know, we don't, we don't know about EDA, we don't know, uh, we won't know about MBRC, um, in even the earmarked funding. But we're just, you know, we're trying to go after whatever we can. So even if we're back down to just 1, 2, and 3 of this project, which is what we have agreed is like, you know, that's the bare minimum, what we absolutely need to do. Hopefully we'll, we'll get, um, you know, enough funding to, to make that happen. So, um, really what we're looking for, I think, uh, today, and maybe it doesn't necessarily have to happen today, Andy, I'm, I'm not sure, because we did, you know, we haven't submitted the application yet. We simply submitted a letter of interest. But what we said is that we would seek your approval for the, um, to allocate this 88, 160 from Harbor Reserve.
Okay, so we commit this money and then we don't get the grant. You know, that, and that's not the estimated, obviously it's gonna take much more than $88,000 to fix that boat launch, I'm just guessing.
Estimating 186, okay, this is a very rough estimate.
Okay, so if we don't get that grant, that money just goes back into our reserve account or our use? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could authorize it contingent upon the, um, the receipt of the grant of the, you know, the NBRC grant.
And the NBRC, correct?
Yeah.
NBRC.
Northern Borders, yeah, and Northern Borders Regional.
Yeah, there's too many acronyms these days.
Yes.
I wondered too, though, um, if, as opposed to simply MBRC to, to make it contingent upon, um, either MBRC or the earmarked funding, which is called, uh, community project funding.
Community funding?
Community project funding.
Wow, yeah, okay. I move we, uh, allocate $88,160 from the Harbor Reserve. Uh, contingent upon this approval of the Northern Borders Regional or the Community Project Funding Grant. Grant or grants.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, is there any discussion? Okay, seen none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, let me just see.
Is there somebody, again, there was a chat there, was there a question?
Let's see, um.
The net factory area expected to be permanent without a plan for that area being developed yet.
I don't know what I mean, I wouldn't say permanent, I don't, I have no idea, I mean.
Would you read that again, Andy?
Is the parking at the net factory area expected to be permanent without a plan for the area being developed yet?
Oh.
I mean, there'd be parking while it's undeveloped.
Right.
But after that, you know.
Yeah, I think we saw, as we were looking at it with the engineers, there's certainly plenty of room there to accommodate down, downstreet parking while we still figure out what to do with the building.
Right.
Um, there was no, I mean, you know, knowing that the town of Inlay doesn't solely own that piece down there, we'd have to work with the water district.
Right.
Um, to do whatever long-term changes there might be. But there was at least real estate and space down there without the public works department, stuff all in front and behind it, um, to be able to look at, as a short term at least, improvement for the parking areas.
And I think as, um, as you recall, I think it was last fall, we were looking at, um, you know, that, the recommendation from the downtown master plan to implement the net factory site reuse committee. And we decided it wasn't quite time to do that yet. Um, so I would imagine that, you know, as we get closer to looking at long-term solutions for that area, we, we would reconsider that recommendation and, um, and enact that committee. That, that's what I would imagine, but you, you, you all might have a different, um, sense of that. Okay. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Munch.
Munch is new.
No, Munch is new, it's, yeah.
So there we are, picture of the sea level rise committee member taking a photograph of the, um, tidal stick that we have near the, at the ferry terminal. Uh, and this, the project that we want to talk to you about tonight is definitely related to what you see this person doing right now. And you've probably seen around several sites on the island, um, flood gauge markers and people out taking observations about the height of the, the tide on that particular day. So the project that we would like to share with you tonight, uh, those of you who got your packets, hopefully you read the memo we sent about what we would like to do and why. And it's, it was just briefly, this, the idea to do this was born out of a conversation with one of the scientists at NOAA about the data that Vinyl Haven currently has on our tide charts. Tide, tide charts is not really Vinyl Haven data. It's, it comes from what's going on at Bar Harbor where they collect it continually and they extrapolate the data to meet, um, kind of the conditions in Vinyl Haven as they can be estimated. So we would, we think it's important for the island, um, on the long term and the short term, we would like to, to develop and install a tidal station and a weather station on the island. Possibly more than one. And the goal was to, is for us to collect our own data about what our tides are doing, what currents are doing, what the current weather conditions are on the island and have that data updated, um, continually. This would of course require the, um, the purchase of some various sensors and equipment and so on. But we have some very sophisticated and experienced collaborators who are happy to do this, who would love to do this with us. And they've done it on other, in other coastal communities. And that is NOAA, the Maine Geological Survey, the Gulf of Maine Research Institute, and Hurricane Island, which has in the last two years established their own tidal and weather stations with great success and not very much cost. Um, we're, we are not asking the town for funding to do this, we intend to fund it through grants. Uh, but what we would like is your permission for us to go forward with this. We've already had some meetings with these people, they've, um, voiced their support in helping us set it up and helping us figure out what kind of sensors we might need. How we can aggregate the data and make it available to the, the folks on the island who can use it, which would be fishermen. The ferry service, anyone who has a boat that uses the waters around Vinyl Haven, teachers, students. Gabe, unless you want to kick something in there, that, that's kind of the big picture.
I absolutely, totally in, in favor of anything guys can do.
Yeah.
All the support we can give.
Move that we allow the planning and implementation as described in this memo.
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Munch.
Thank you, I think it's gonna be very exciting. We think it's gonna be very exciting.
Okay, um, broadband task force.
So I'm in a report on behalf of the committee, Jan Anne, um, uh, was on the mainland today, so, um, I'm stepping in for her. Just wanted to, uh, present an update with where we are at with the campaign, um, and that is we are at launch time for the survey. Um, we are stuffing envelopes, not quite as we speak, but in between our meetings today, um, stuffing envelopes. Um, so, uh, everybody, um, who is a taxpayer, uh, who, who has a taxpayer address on file with the town. And anyone who has a 04863 address will be mailed a survey along with a, uh, document that gives a overview of the campaign and information that people will need to make an informed decision when they take the survey. And there, it's a very short survey, uh, there's just five questions. And really the crux of it is, is that this is a straw poll to see if the community, uh, is in favor of the town implementing, um, a municipal broadband project. And, uh, there, there will be an online version of the survey, which, um, has been finalized. And it's not, it's not gonna launch until the mailing goes out. Um, but if anyone is interested, this is the URL by which you would access the survey. So when you go to that URL on the town website, you get all the information you need about the survey, access to, um, other documents or, uh, information that might, you might find useful. And there's a link where you click and that will bring you to the survey. If you go there now, it just says, "survey coming soon," um, but that will say, "click here to take the survey." Again, very short, um, and to incentivize, um, because this is a grant-funded project, we were able to include incentives, um, as part of our grant funding. So we're going to offer, um, the opportunity to win a hundred dollar cash prize. If you take the survey, you'll be able to enter into a drawing for that cash prize. So hopefully that will encourage folks who might not be interested in the survey to take the survey. And our goal is to get as large a response rate as we possibly can, because we want to make sure this is, um, representative of the community. But also that we hear everyone's voice in terms of, do you support this? What, and, and you will learn when you go to take the survey and read the, the information, what it's gonna take to do this project. So in between the launch, um, which like I said, is happening, um, this week, uh, um, we will be doing a bunch of community outreach, not just on social media. But we'll be making phone calls, we'll be showing up at meetings, um, and we're really just trying to get the word out to people about what this is and encourage people to take the survey. So any questions on that?
When will the survey end, when should we expect our results?
We talked about, um, initially, we are hoping to launch in March. Um, and so we had initially talked about, um, you know, like mid-March to mid-April. But since we're really launching the beginning of April, we're looking at, uh, depending on how mu, you know, how many responses we get back, uh, we're looking at sort of mid to late April. And I, I'm gonna say late April, but our goal as, as, for the broadband committee's goal is to present the findings of, uh, the survey to the select board at the beginning of May.
Great.
And what was the prize, a year's subscription to the broadband?
We had talked about that, that's so funny that you said that, because we kept advocating for that, I was like, that's, that's definitely like, you're gonna hang your hat on that happening if you're.
I feel about more than one survey.
Well, now that we have one selectman in it to fraud.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Gabe.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, capital projects.
Great, uh, so the, the garage is getting its, uh, drywall taped and sanded, the painters are coming out next week. The electricians are back out this week, uh, doing some more electrical install. Um, we're planning on in the next couple of weeks, um, digging the trench, uh, to upgrade the power to 220. And I think the garage doors that are planning to have out, hopefully out here mid, mid-month, mid-April. So, um, as of right now, there's no reason for us to think that it's not gonna be completed by the end of April, um, as long as those subcontract and parts and everything supplies come in. The sand salt shed is, uh, the base blocks are being set. Uh, I think when I was up there this afternoon, um, they had almost one of the long walls locked set. Um, so they're moving along, there's just two of them on site, setting those, and I think more will be heading out when they have to put up the cross members and, on the fabric. Um, and the bridge is kind of on hold until the, until the, um, the pre-cash members come out for the culvert piece. Um, it's just a matter of the company, um, getting a chance to pour it. And once they, once they build the forms, it's here, it'll be done within, uh, within two weeks and they're able to get here. So last thing I knew that was mid-April, uh, mid to late April that it would be delivered, uh, the material in the fish plant parking lot. Um, like I said, told the company, I said, at that point, it was everything in early April, if the culvert members would be here. But that material's gonna backfill the culvert piece when it gets put in, so they can't move it up on site until that happens. But, um, I did say that we couldn't have any more material added to the parking lot, because it's gonna be getting busy, I would imagine, in the next few weeks. So, um, that's what that material's for. Other than that, we did get, um, I think they have in here. They did send us, um, an update on, um, the transfer station retaining wall work, minus some of the other, um, flow and, and other things that we were looking to address at the transfer station. And so their estimated cost to replace the retaining wall, we still need to put concrete pads in for the containers to sit on and be able to move, um, and pavement. Um, so 636,500 is the estimated cost for that project, if we take out the other, uh, upgrades, but, you know, other modifications, mostly the low traffic flow pattern. Um, and I think that was, um, just under 900,000, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, including, yeah, like 870.
Yeah, so a little over $200,000 difference, uh, by not, you know, modifying the, the layout any. That was, that was the biggest, the biggest change in, in, in that. You know, we are still gonna have to do something, um, in that area down below with the burn pile and the metal pile to do something to help put those more in compliance with the, the transfer station standards. Um, the pile gets a little bit big at times for the burn pile, we still need to get rid of the ash. Um, I believe we're still, either way, planning to try to utilize most of the ash on-site as fill, um, either behind the wall or in deep holes. Um, that hopefully we'll be able to remove a lot of that instead of trucking it off the island. So no need to make a decision today, but you have the numbers, we'll continue to work, um, to get input from the staff and, um, for you to think about that. If there's any guidance that you have or things you want answered, just let me know and we'll keep working on that.
Well, if the project costs, yeah, yeah, $200,000 and chump change per se, but it's also not such a difference that with the improvement of service, it's worth a pretty serious consideration, I would think, not tonight, but just in general.
All right.
So, the, the other cost that was more expensive was improving the traffic flow. Did it also include putting in a scale at some point, you ever mentioned, we didn't even price that out?
We've talked about it over the years in, in the past. Um, so there's kind of two options, there's the above ground, and the one you drive on, right, what we're talking about, it was the above ground and then the ones that are able to, everything below. It was the above ground and then the ones that are able to, everything below ground. So it's just you even drive on. The challenge with the ones you put in the ground, probably aren't gonna have the depth to dig and put one in the ground. And if you put one above ground that you have to drive on, you gotta have ramps, essentially have it ramped. And you gotta have that at such a scale that we were, we don't have the space to accommodate. And then, in most cases, if you're gonna have a scale, you gotta come in, get weighed, get weighed on the way, you know, on the way out, so you know what your load was. So either you're talking about putting two in or having a flow that would only allow one vehicle in and out at a time, so they could do that. So we looked at it, but it just, the volume we have, it just didn't quite seem to make sense.
That's obviously the most accurate way to figure out for demo and all that stuff, but if we don't have the space for it, then.
And, and one set of those scales that were above ground, without the the earthwork to make that so you could ramp and get up on it, I think Carl had looked in it before he retired, and I think it was anywhere from 70 to 85 or $100,000 each.
Each, each what?
For the scale.
Each?
Scale.
Oh, yeah.
If we had to do two.
One going, yeah.
Yeah.
We had to do 200, $200,000.
Plus the labor and, yeah, to put them in, so you're.
It'd take a long time to recoup those costs.
Yeah.
You know, and more accurate.
Well, I think that's where the, looking at, is there a more efficient way to get people in and out and have a way to kind of screen better? You know, what's coming in as opposed to kind of everyone coming in in which direction and you know, doing what they do, and hopefully we're capturing it.
Yeah.
And that was what, that was one of the improvements that they had looked at in the initial plan.
Gabe, Gabe, you have a question coming in?
Yeah, no, I just wanna say, I know this is a drop in the bucket, but something to consider. If, I mean, when this, when all of this happens, is that we still can access the DEP waste diversion grants. It's a, it's really a drop in the bucket, but I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, burn pile versus chipping, you know, like waste diversion grant would be something we could use to get, get a large chipper, anything that helps with, you know, keeping materials on island and diverting them from the waste stream. So if there's ways to incorporate some of those strategies that could possibly alter the, like, operations, and that might have an impact on, you know, what, what all of this encompasses. I'm just tossing that out there. Again, it's not a lot of funding, but it would be something to consider at, at the same time in, to incorporate into this project.
Anything else under capital project or?
What's that?
Any other capital project?
Just that they did, you can see in there, I put in my, my report, they did give us work orders for both, and I don't know if I mentioned this at our last meeting, I know I did at the budget meeting. A work order for the Vinyl Cove North Haven Road project, as well as a work order for preliminary design on the high street sidewalk piece. The two of them together were almost 40,000, I think, to have both of those done. But I know the budget committee talked about it. And if I'm forgetting to pass that on, you know, I'll email you the work orders, so you can see those. But the plan was to have them considered for, for next year's budget, to be able to pay for that. And there was a potential for, I gotta call and follow up, but a potential that we might be able to find some grant funding for the Vinyl Cove preliminary, because if we're talking about the impacts of the saltwater marsh that have been recreated in mitigating for tidal issues and, and flooding for the road, there might be some ways that we could, there is a grant potential that we might be able to offset some of that cost. And that one, I think, was 27,000 to do that preliminary review.
Right. So interestingly enough, I, when I was reading that information at lunch today, I was speaking with a former selectman, and she let me know that the engineering company, that she cannot remember the name of, that designed that project up there, let the selectman know that flooding right there would be such a rarity, it would be once every several years at most. So it seems though they must, they should bear some responsibility for a obviously faulty, you know, estimate or design. I'm not sure what company it was, but I mean, there must be some, no, I, I see you shaking your head, but I mean, like.
No, I mean, there's a lot to understand that project, and there was a lot that went into it in the town from what I was reading into the whole file box I was going through and started to look at it. I mean, I had the impression that the town did initially try to go after some of this, because there was, there was increased flooding when they increased the culvert size, and properties did have damage, right, flooding. And the town did go after at that time for, basically what happened was that, in some, in some regard, part of the issue was there was no modeling of the tidal flow and the potential for flood damage. And so the, after the fact, when you realize how much flooding there was, there was a lot of work that went into trying to quantify how much land had been taken. And there was, in one case, a property owner's septic system, as I understood, the tank basically floated out of the ground. You know, and there was other issues, the, the road that goes, where the old trotting park was there, that heads up into the woods there, that was, material was paid, you know, bought for, to come in and raise that section of the road that was flooding. So there was a lot initially after the fact. So at this point, I, I'm not aware of anything, and I don't know if it's even worth 15 plus years later to even try to pin it on anything at this point, other than, you know, not demanding or realizing that just the modeling should have been done.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was telling them. The benchmarks were off.
No kidding, no kidding.
I said, "Not there." I thought the comments were really challenging.
And not, and not for nothing, but the, the road is also settled. And I don't know if they accounted for the, the settling of that road through there. I mean, it's just from a quick reaction from one of the folks that worked on that project from the state 15 plus years ago, and they got out of the vehicle last year, they said, "That's down two feet easy." And they didn't take a benchmark, you know, find the benchmark and take a actual reading, but just their initial reaction and looking through the culvert, they couldn't see at the other end of it. So they said, "It's obviously come down a lot." So that's another, right, the other issue there, the, the water level increase and the road sinking. But we have, at least have the numbers for what it would, what it would cost to have them do the preliminary review on that and make that next step and get a, a better idea of cost to do a project. You know, we can talk through the options for, you know, we had asked, I had asked them to include in the scope being able to provide us with ideas for, you know, controlling the water, doing some sort of manual flow system. And actually had talked to someone who worked on that project, who lives here now, full-time, and his company was brought in after the fact to try and measure some of the flood damage and whatnot. And they did look at briefly that as an option. And so I, I'll pull that out, and I did already share it with the engineers, so they could see the results of those findings. But there was a report that went to the town as a, "Here are the things you could consider doing now that the water flow has increased so much substantially." But there was some really good information in there that's still relevant today as to things that they suggested or could look at then. Whether it was controlling the flow, adding impediments on the other, on either side, would have some, you know, potential for, you know, not the solution you'd wanna do, because it will likely cause other problems, you know, forcing that water to go somewhere else. Their, their biggest thing was downsizing the culvert. You know, and, and you're talking about doing that on a project that should probably last 650, 60, 70 years. It's only been 15. So I mean, that's the, that was their most logical and easy solution to it at the time. But I'll, I'll send you that report at least, and we can review it. Engineers have it, they have access to more data if they wanna get it. We'll work through, you know, being able to start that if, if budgets are appropriated to do that work starting July 1st. Okay. I think that is it. So sorry, they are, they also mentioned putting together some work orders for us to consider for them to get some numbers on and help us with ship, ship grant for the waterfront infrastructure, as well as looking at the cost for the boat launch, boat ramp up at the thoroughfare.
Great. Okay, road commission report.
Reports. Dan started, did start using the pump work software, so they do look a little bit different. And I know the ones in the last two weeks, because they're doing more work, I just, I forgot to include it. And he said one of them was almost 20 pages. They have it broken down by job tasks, so we're still trying to figure out using that system, you know, what's the best one. Right now, we're kind of caught in the, in between, where, I mean, God forbid we get snow at this point, but you know, the roads are still pretty soft. As long as we get the weather we've been getting today, I think they're itching to be able to start doing some gravel road grading work. But we are, until the frost fully comes out of some of those, there's probably a few of them that aren't fully ready for that yet. And God forbid, we do get something that we have to push snow on, and we did just grade it. The, the material's gonna move really easily. And so we are doing that. They've been spending a lot of time putting in signs that have gone missing or have been vandalized over the past year, over the winter. Frankly, it takes up a lot of time, and each sign's a little bit different, but the average cost per sign is a hundred bucks probably, sign and post and all. And then you got the crew time and material and, and labor or the labor included. So I mean, not an inexpensive thing for us to do to go and replace all these things that, for some reason, seem to disappear and get ripped out. In some cases, can't even find them. You can at least find it, you can at least save the sign probably. But they, I think they're on, I think the third workday in the last, last four weeks, two of two weeks, just putting in new sign, putting signs back in.
So are the signs up eight feet like they're supposed to be?
I, I don't know. I know the posts are certainly high enough to be there.
Because that's what I was led to understand, that that was the height that they were supposed to be, is eight feet.
It may be, and, and I'm not, I'm not sure, I guess.
Well, that would certainly eliminate somebody being able to stop and pick a sign down.
Oh, yeah.
Unless they pull the whole thing.
I think, I think in most instances, the, the whole, the people are trying to get the whole sign post out, you know, sign and all.
And then you can get, then you can take care of.
Well, they've got a lot to do, I guess.
Yeah. It's, it's frankly, it's a waste of time for our crew to be doing that kind of stuff and a waste of taxpayers' money, but for some reason, it keeps happening. So that's what we'll keep doing, because we have to put those things up. Yeah. Other than that, you know, we have had them kind of pulling every which way. The, the, our planning this week to get the floats back overboard at the town parking lot. Timing that with the tide, of course. We've had them here and there on projects, trying to help out with the the capital project, the garage project in particular, and we are gonna have them help dig the trench for the electrical service. So it's just kind of, we're in that period where we can kind of, not, not ready to do full-on road capital project work yet with them, and waiting to get the roads graded. Pretty busy at the moment.
Full business.
Country graduate.
Oh, good. Jess is here. So Jess, Jess has just had to step away for a second, but she's back. So she is going to present. And Jess, do you want me to put up the slide, or shall we? Okay, great.
Either way, either way, it's fine. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. Sorry, my daughter just choked on a chip. Anyway, she's fine. And that's what happens when you work from home, is you get pulled in all different directions sometimes. So I'm here on behalf of Portrait of a Graduate. This is a group I've been working with for the past year. I suppose it seems crazy how fast a year has gone. But I also fill the role of a college and career consultant for Vinyl Haven High School. So I've gotten to know a lot of the students and the families pretty well over the last two years, and look forward to continuing that work. So I'm just here to give a quick update about Portrait of a Graduate. It's all good news. It's going very well. We had great participation in both our community and family and student surveys and focus groups, so much so that we're crunching data fast and furiously, but with great accuracy. So we have a number of people working on tabulating the data so that we can put it into a usable format to continue our discussion over the next, next six months or so. So really, what we're, what we're gonna be looking at in the next phase is what the community and the students and the families said, and what we, how that will shape our work in creating what we are hoping for with a portrait of a graduate. So that's basically what I have, but I'm happy to answer questions, or Gabe and I can, because I don't know if I'll have all the answers, but if anybody has any. Did I miss anything, Gabe? Okay. So you'll hear from us again soon. We'll be asking for more community input, more, less surveys, more, I think, we're hoping, depending on COVID, more roundtable discussions, hopefully, community events that we'll be able to gather and discuss our data, and see each other face to face in a way to make this really come to fruition. So you definitely haven't heard the last of us, but we are going into a little bit of a quiet time in terms of our visibility. So we just wanted to let you know, we're still hard at work. Things are going well, and we'll see you in a few months.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Yeah, anytime you have questions, let me know. Thanks, Gabe.
Thanks, Jess.
Okay, bye.
It's a great project. I've been following it all along. Terrific project.
Okay, we're on the new business. We have a liquor license application for Dalton Millies.
More approval.
Seconded by Pam Allen. All those in favor?
Yes.
And a liquor license application for a school doing the, for Christine Davidson.
More approval.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Yes.
I think we're gonna vote, no, someplace to get alcohol. And send open back. And I have those applications right here. You can sign them for me. You don't have to do it right now. Landy's sort of that's.
Do I need to come up and sign those, or is four signatures enough?
Four is enough. If you have, we can swing through in the next day or two, we'll, we'll have it on there, but four should, four is enough.
Oh, I can if I have to, but I wasn't planning on coming up there.
No, it's, it's fine, as long as there's a quorum on the Landy's sort of that's. This was asked to be brought up. I wasn't ready for the last meeting, but just the, I think Phil had initiated the desire to have a discussion about the home occupation wording in our ordinance. So I don't know if you had anything more. Ellen did put this together. It's just a section from our ordinance to the top half of the page and the bottom half of the page, just showing language from, she had pulled North Haven and Islesborough's language for permitting and mostly reviewing those. So again, not meant to be a discussion, obviously, I think you know, to change the ordinance, but if you had this, had questions or discussion to help guide the planning commission, any review of this, they could then take that further and then bring it back if there's recommended changes for the community to consider.
Andy, this is Holly. I'm on here. I think Ellen's on as well, if there's something we need to add to or talk about in any way.
Great.
I think it's pretty obvious what, what needs to be addressed, and that's the ambiguous language around what's allowed in hour and one, because it says, unfortunately, it says occupations similar to home occupation, and that is just way too ambiguous. But I know the planning commission is aware of that, and, and that's what I think is the most critical issue.
Phil, we couldn't agree more. Just to, I know there's not a discussion, but just to, so that we can maybe quell some other comments or concerns, you can always contact myself or Ellen, but we are looking, especially with the dynamics and the demographics of the island changing, we're making sure that, as you just said, that the ambiguity of that is definitely more defined, and also to include mandatory site visits by the planning board, so they can see the situations that are involved. You know, just really to hone that down, to be, to be much more specific, part of what we're doing is going back to figure out how we got to this position of how, how this is written, and you can't really kind of know where you are until you know the past. But we are, trust me, doing our thorough research on this, and we'll come back to you folks with a very clear process for how these are handled. We would like at some point to ask that there is a complete moratorium put on home occupations until we have a chance to get this put, put together.
So what kind of review is being done with the no nuisance, offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, glare, traffic, or parking for approved home occupation permits?
What kind of, what is done, your review?
So if you, if you approve a home occupation for some sort of business, essentially, and they do produce some of those things that you've said that are not a things that you've said that are not allowed, what kind of review is done? Is anything brought up or does that have to come from a budding property owners?
Well, that, I think that's, um, I think this is Ella. I think that's the big problem and the question. I mean, the planning board members never made a site visit and then they approved this. And no other town that I've looked at so far has an ordinance like this with this kind of loopholes. North Haven has a conditional permit, uh, puts some of the language on the bottom of the page that requires a public hearing, a butters to be notified um, by certified mail. Islesborough also has very strict guidelines for anything like this outside of the norm of a residential neighborhood. I don't really know. I was on the planning commission years ago. I have no idea how this thing was created, but I personally think a home occupation is not a garage on property that somebody doesn't live on. Or, um, it, it, it just, it, it seems crazy to me and I, I would like to join Holly and ask you all to put a moratorium on allowing home occupations under this ordinance to be granted until we can completely review this and write new language and have it approved by the town. I think there's an opportunity where other people are going to be using this language for other possible inappropriate uses and something has to be done. There's nothing in our ordinance that I could find that requires a butters um, to be notified or public, um, notice. And I think that's another problem in our ordinance. People always used to be notified in the past when there was a permit being asked for on an abutting.
Public notice is required and, um, that's by posting the agenda.
Yeah, I, I would move, I'm not, do we need to make a motion? But I would agree that there probably should be a moratorium at this point until we can close some of these loopholes, but also easier for people who do want to open a legitimate business to do so. Because I don't want to, I don't want to limit people from opening up business, especially when the town needs. But going through this, again, these loopholes just does not seem to be the right way to do it.
Do we, Andy, was that, do we have the luxury to impose a moratorium?
Uh, I did not come prepared to answer to that. Generally, yes. I don't know all exactly what you would need to do today to be able to enact that. I mean, it would be worth, you know, consulting MMA legal before, probably before just doing that. Um, that's the best answer I can give you today. I wasn't prepared to answer that question.
Can you please look into that? Cause yeah, we will.
Uh, I don't, no one's brought it up, but I'm assuming the, the, the biggest, um, inconsistency to the, to the work currently in the ordinance, the second paragraph of the standard. So you have your definition of what a home occupation is. And then you have, if you are putting in a home occupation, your P is the standard you have to follow. And that second paragraph, um, almost negates the first one. Yeah. And so it hasn't been mentioned, but I think for those listening, I think it's that second paragraph in which the, what does it say? Um,
The residential structure need not be present on the lot where the activity takes place.
Yeah.
That seems to negate it being residential use. If you don't actually live on the property, how do you make it residential use? That doesn't seem to make sense at all. So.
Yeah, the residential need not be met, this residential structure need not be present um, on which the activity takes place. But that, that particular sentence, that whole second paragraph really um, seemed to strike some, quite a few folks, um, in just generally reviewing, um, you know, that, that whole standard.
Well, that is the ambiguity that we're referring to to begin with. So that's, that's pretty much talked about. I'm going to get back to this moratorium. Uh, I, I'm not sure that we have the luxury either, but between now and then, I think the least we could do would be to impress upon the, uh, planning board the need to exercise caution when presented with questionable home occupation.
Is there any opportunity to revoke a permit or to further investigate after a permit's granted? Because it seems that the whole notion of nuisance, traffic, noise, setbacks and parking might not have been addressed.
Thirty days.
I mean, yeah, there's the appeal process for any application, uh, within, within a timeframe after, and we're well beyond that at this point for um, anything issued before February or before March.
Thirty days, correct?
Right.
It's a shame it wasn't appealed.
I mean, the only other, the only other means you have is to bring some sort of land use violations lawsuit against a, a property owner uh, for being a violation of an ordinance.
Or against the town.
Or some, or someone who, against the town for having not enforced its own ordinance.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a real danger and I think that's really the only option that a trouble the butter has now is to file a complaint against the town, which I hate to see. But you know, there are very, the specifics of this one are very awkward and difficult to deal with, but certainly there's nothing uncertain about the ambiguity that needs to be addressed.
Is there a violation? Are there any violations?
Sorry, that's one of my big concerns going forward is if we continue to, if you continue to get approved, somewhere down the road, the town's going to be liable for these because the, the butters won't have any recourse but to sue the town.
Well, there's, that's the one thing that, one, one piece of this that I have already checked with, um, the CEO is how this permit was written. Um, and, and again, I don't, I'm not comfortable. There always has to be a case that causes a change and I'm not comfortable going directing this at this property owner because they do bring a very needed, um, service to the town. But in answer to the earlier question, I've talked with Fay about this particular one and how the permit was written as to one instance, how many cars are allowed to be there? Cause sometimes garages become ghost yard, ghost graveyards for cars. And there had been some specifics written in and I think it's the onus is on the folks who have issues with this to make sure that those are followed, but and, and review of this whole ordinance, that needs to be looked at, uh, very tightly, how the permits are written um, to make sure that the rules are followed or the, um, items are followed.
So am I, my correction that now the butters to the property owner have to be the ones who keep an eye on them to make sure they don't have too many cars on their property?
No.
Okay.
No, that, no, that privilege belongs to anyone.
Yeah.
Well, I would, shouldn't the code enforcement officer? Shouldn't the code enforcement officer be checking on that? Isn't that her responsibility?
Yes.
But anyone can bring that to our attention and request it if you look at it.
Right.
Generally, our practice is not to proactively go and insert property generally. Again, I'm not talking about any one particular permit or type of use, but just generally. Yeah, I have not directed our code enforcement officer to proactively go out and, and look for violations. If something's brought to their attention or they do happen to see something, you know, that's one thing. And you know, but unless there's good reason to believe there's a violation going ongoing or happening, then, then we'll, you know, let's notify, look at it, look into it.
One thing that the planning commission has already, we talked about at our last meeting when this was first brought up, as we're moving forward with this, was also carefully look at our zoning, uh, the zoning on the island for, um, with these businesses, if there are, if we change the language a little bit on the home occupations to still make sure we're covered zone wise uh, going forward, again, with the demographics changing of the island.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, until we find out what uh, parameters exist that we impress upon the planning board and the code enforcement officer, the need to pay particular attention to home occupations and and, uh, certain important.
Is there a second to that motion?
Okay, so you want to make a motion then?
He did, he did make
Right.
that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Alright. So as much as I agree with the sentiment of that, however, if in between now and when we have an answer about whether or not we can grant moratoriums until issuing moratorium, until we can polish this. You know, if somebody applies for a permit and meets this standard, then you know, they have met this, they have met that, they are, they are, they have submitted a permit in accordance with our zoning ordinance.
Well, not quite. Not quite, because the language is ambiguous, says that the, uh, the home occupation in an R and one has to simply be similar to a home occupation otherwise, which means it's open to interpretation. And as long as it's open to interpretation, I would feel comfortable offering caution to the permitting agency uh, for all the obvious reasons.
In all reality, the, the, the due date to submit permits for April's consideration is tomorrow. Um, I'm not aware of any currently in the queue for home occupation consideration, so I don't know how realistic of a problem it, it may be between now and our next meeting, in which I could have an answer from MMA and likely a draft of a moratorium for, to be voted on, but.
Yeah, that makes sense. Alright, I will throw my motion in.
And it just seems like most of these problems could be solved by deleting that last paragraph.
Good idea.
So, I mean, it's not necessarily, I mean, you know,
Yeah, I think there's
home occupation out here is meant for, as a broad example, someone who picks crab in a room, you know, in a kitchen or off a kitchen, you know, and sells the crab, you know, however, you know, peddled on the street.
Yeah, you go back to the definition and it does, you know, other than the ambiguity Phil mentioned, um, customarily, uh, conducted on an adwellment. I mean, perhaps, perhaps, uh, looking at other ordinances to see, did they define that more particularly, you know, is that something that was meant to be? I mean, the, I think there was another part in that other, in, in P, the standard, it talks about up to five rooms for rent. Well, that sounds like a small lodging facility. So I, I mean, again, just looking at, I mean, what is, what is and isn't meant by, and do you, does, you know, would the town want to consider something a little more concrete? Um, you know, is it takeout stand where there's no dining or something? Is that something that can be considered a home occupation? Just preparing a meal and putting it out the door. I mean, and so again, should there be something more concrete in that or are there better definitions elsewhere, you know, already created that could be considered?
One of the activities that prompted that exception in the first place, when they wrote it was there was somebody out around the island road that who had, who wanted a permit to do a little business out there. And the interpretation of the planning board was that what they proposed to do was similar to a home occupation that would be allowed elsewhere. And so they granted the permit. And the reason I know this isn't because I remember it, but I checked with Gigi who was instrumental in writing the original, uh, in, in composing the original, uh, ordinance and checked with her in particular on that. But anyway, it's not a matter of ours at this point. I'm glad that the planning commission is is, is resolved as they are to, uh, addressing the ambiguity and the troublesome few troublesome issues that there are in there.
On another practice, I agree with you, Phil. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Holly, for being here tonight. But on another practical aspect of this entire dilemma, when are we going to be allowed to have public hearings again? You know, so these ordinances and changes can be discussed at a town meeting.
We can, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not too far off. We just need the space and/or the weather if we do it outdoors to be, you know, uh, to allow us to do so comfortably. Um, this particular room, as we know, is not going to be big enough to allow. And whether or not it's a hybrid or all in person, you know, is another thing to consider. Um, so if you're going to allow still virtual participation, we need to find a space that can still be set up in a way to be heard and and hear others. Uh, if it's going to be only in person, then we truly probably need to just meet outside.
Right.
Uh, but probably I would assume want to wait at least another couple of weeks.
Well, yeah, so, but you know, the, the planning commission will probably need a couple of weeks anyway. We'll have to schedule one, but hopefully by May, because this is not the only. Uh, this is not the only zoning, my question that the planning commission is discussing and it's, you know, they've, they've been brought to the selectmen as well. I think aviation, quarry, uh, is a handful that we still need to approve anyway.
One there's in, um, I, I gotta, I just got it yesterday, but, um, Mick Ed had gone through and looked at our current ordinance, just for things that are out of date with the statutes and some of the other things. And I know the planning commission has had that generally on their radar and had some looking at it. They did provide some, some guidance on a few things for them to consider. So I gotta send that over. It just came in yesterday. Um, for them to consider. So there are a lot of things in those, in those land use ordinance to consider and you, if we have the ability to issue moratorium on home occupations for, you know, we could certainly do that far enough out to be able to accommodate the review, public hearing process in, in a vote. So that, that can certainly be done.
Andy, so you said there is someone reviewing our ordinances, the ones that would go to pu- public hearing? So we know that they're legal before they're voted on?
No, I said someone has already, uh, reviewed the land use ordinance, uh, for inconsistencies with state statute and
Okay.
like the floodplain reference, um, some of the other matters that frankly, uh, are probably some more pressing issues. Um, cause they're just not consistent with what's required, um, in some areas. So, um, they have it. It just came yesterday.
What did you say, Andy?
What's that?
What did you say, reviewed it?
Uh, Midcoast Economic Development District is part of our county taxes we pay. The, every town in Knox County is now a member of the the organization and that's one of the services they offer. So.
Cool. On another note about the ordinances, um, I reached out to, um, John Wazaleski. And he, his wife, Bessie Khan, used to have a land use planning business. Um, so I'm hoping that he might be able to help the planning commission. Yeah, that's great. Were you able to hear that? I got a message that my internet's unstable. What a surprise. No, we
I think they were talking about you.
We did hear that.
Okay, let's go on to our reported town manager.
Great. Uh, mentioned the bridge and the garage and the salt shed. Um, both the other two work orders there for those projects. Um, so seventeen thousand five hundred to look at High Street. I did have them, I think I mentioned including the whole High Street sidewalk, given the drainage issues that would be there. Um, need, need to be addressed now anyways. Um, so that was seventeen thousand five hundred and then twenty nine thousand, um, depending on if, if, if and how we change the scope. Um, they said most of the cost in that final quote one was having surveyors come out and get, get benchmarks and, and do on the ground field assessment. Um, that would be timely, time consuming. So, um, unless I can find what they need in the old paperwork and documents, um, that probably won't move a whole lot, even if we do modify the scope a little bit. But hopefully that, and maybe that can come down and I'm hoping we can get some grant funding. Um, ferry service, uh, obvious. Uh, there was a wind dad a couple, uh, last week, two weeks ago. Two weeks, two weeks ago, um, uh, sharing the, um, some of the proposed changes to the Rockland Terminal procedures for lining up and boarding a boat. Um, uh, we provided more information on the town website. Uh, the advisory, uh, main invite, main state ferry service advisory board page at the, uh, ferry service website has a link to the presentation as well as the audio from the meeting. For anyone interested in, in hearing more and, and seeing more about that. Um, it was, um, step one apparently, or I guess step two, because step one would have been doing the assessment, but um, the, the presentation, the advisory board members that, um, I'm being told was kind of part, uh, in the beginning, part of a phase of what will be a public process. Um, and so Mark said he was going to be following up, I think this week with a letter for those that have already submitted comments and concerns, um, to engage with people saying, hey, we've acknowledged of getting this. Um, and I, I'm hoping that there'll be a timeline presented at some point soon for people to see what is in store. Um, he did talk about there likely be some modifications to the parking area, but not the lineup procedure. Um, that the speed bumps that they put in last year to slow traffic down, we're going to go back in. Um, I think they're looking at doing something more permanent, um, because those temporary ones did get moved a lot and had to move them. They, he did mention most likely trying to put some, um, some staff or something up at that, in that triangle area to try and mitigate the, the multiple flows of traffic coming off the boat, out of the boatyard, across the parking lot, that, that, that biggest concern they raised. Um, so it does sound like there's going to be some low hanging fruit and some of the more immediate issues that likely they're going to try and address those this summer. Um, and then have the conversation about, um, what they presented, um, and some of the longer term changes they, they were hoping to kind of implement. So, um, but he was saying that they weren't planning on, you know, making all those changes happen this summer.
I'm not going to hold my breath.
They've been talking about getting rid of line cars since 2013.
Right. Um, the swap shop Norm Reedy had, uh, offered to help with, um, and he did today, actually. Um, put down a, um, some rubber, what do I call it? Just, I guess some rubber material, um, underneath that last clamboard and over the sill in. Just, I guess, some rubber material, um, underneath that last clamboard and over the sill and flash that up in there. And so. Um, we'll, we'll kind of go over that, uh, material with material and kind of grade that to slope it. But we're hoping that that takes care of a lot of the water. I mean, that, that addition was built on top of, it looked like just a granite sill. And just by virtue of how it's shaped, the water that comes off the drip line just goes underneath. Um, and so when he was down there today, he said there was about two inches of water inside that addition. Um, so we'll get that out of there. He put that in. Hopefully we'll see some improvements when we're. And the, the public works is out of there and doesn't ever need to, um, circle around the building. We're, we're probably going to put a trench in the backside to get some of the water coming off the back end of the building. To get to the, the actual drain that's across the road part of that. Um, so we'll do a few more things to modify that. Um, and it sounds like. Uh, we'd be able to get some volunteers probably to help put in a couple of windows, um, on the, on that addition. Um, just for some ventilation and some light and all that. And we're going to look at putting in. Pat and Amy had, had talked about wanting to look at putting in some temporary lighting and some of those things that we've talked about before and have. Some money to be able to do, so fast moving along. Um, and hopefully we'll, that water, that fix will work. The budget committee did meet last Tuesday. Um, and they're at a point now they wanted to hear what the school numbers might be. And they were interested in what the town's value would be. Um, I did tell them it's usually April first is the benchmark for assessing what's on the property. And we aren't quite there yet. I mean, it still takes a few weeks after that date to actually get to all the properties and. And capture that value that's there if it's any new value or, or buildings or things removed and to. Consider that too. So the school did, um, since the last meeting, at the last school board meeting, did present some preliminary numbers. Uh, for their budget and they're, you know, just starting their budget review process, so that's there. I, I think with what they shared last week. Possible the budget committee might be able to meet next week. Um, but they were looking at meeting the week of the twelfth, uh, last time we met, so if they can meet. They want to meet a week earlier, uh, that would line up better for you guys to follow up.
Can you scroll up on the computer so I can see what you're talking about?
Um, it was just this, this FY twenty-two budget committee. Can you see that, Jake?
I can now. I just, I just couldn't read. I was trying to follow along and I just couldn't see what you're talking about, so thanks.
What, what's the preliminary school budget?
Uh, they had presented it in two different ways. There was the, the, the money. For the local assessment versus the total expenditure increase, and I don't, I, I can't remember which one it was, but. Um, one was like one point nine, the other was like two point one, something.
Percent.
Percent increase, yeah. Um, I, I can't, I just can't remember which one was which on, because. Obviously, yeah, they, they're going to have some more revenue this year, they're, they're hoping. Um, just like we might see some more revenue in our revenues, um, revenue from revenue sharing. Um, we're, both entities were still not entirely sure how we might be able to spend the, the COVID relief funds. Um, that are coming. Um, we're still waiting for better guidance on just exactly what we might be able to do with that, but. Um, you know, vinyl havens estimated to see, you know, town government to see over a hundred and ten thousand dollars from that. Um, so there's no definitive guidelines on yet how we might be able to spend that. So it's just very vague so far. We're all waiting to see just how we could do that, what we can spend it on. I, I know a lot of them were trying to put back revenues lost and putting that towards what didn't get collected. Um, in our case, I don't think there's a lot of that. Um, so there are some infrastructure things you could put the money towards. Um, and again, hopefully some more guidance. I know everyone's waiting to get it, so hopefully we'll be coming forward. Shared about the grant options already. I think there's another, there is another vaccine clinic scheduled for this coming Saturday. Um, I think most of them are second doses, if I remember right. Um, and they, each week, the medical center continues to put in. A request for more doses, the last, I think, two requests. There's another one into this week, so if you count this one as three, two out of the three requests haven't been filled. Um, and they're hopeful that because of that, this week's will. Um, so it's just, again, a matter of. Waiting for the state to, to send it to them. Uh, they've done a really good job in, um, getting, getting them rolled out out here. I think there's over seven hundred vaccine. Um, seven hundred doses that have been administered so far out here. So.
So when they, when they ask for a, a dose from the state and they don't get it, is that because the state says no or because the state says they'll be coming?
Uh, both. Uh, it's no, because they have, they have only so many they're getting. And they have to allocate it across the state. And so we've been fortunate to get quite a few, and I think our percentages of those vaccinated are. I think slightly above the state average. Um, so if they'll, if, if they are seeing that, that might factor in. Um, they're just, but the, the real issue is just they aren't getting enough to, I mean, they want to do the same thing we want to do is just vaccinate anyone that wants one. Uh, but they are just waiting for that supply, so they have to ration that.
I just got called today for a second.
Carrie and I have been, um, picked up the community paramedicine, um, discussion again. That was something that you might recall, um, a model that we talked about early on when we, when Carrie came on and started working with us. Um, since then, a lot obviously has gone on. The ET three, which is another. Kind of like a, a step closer to having the, the ability to bill for community paramedicine, so the, that's a program in which, you know, we'd be more proactive and the ability to go out. You know, to, to patients and helps pre-screen some things for the medical center in some ways. Um, be more engaged in the community that way around medicine. Um, and then the ET three is a, is a billing model that. Um, the government kind of created as partnering with communities on, and we were one of the communities selected to, to truck, to, you know, partner with that. And so that's just coming on board, and so we're starting to figure out. Where does this help us, you know, in terms of pushing further into the community care medicine program? Um, the state is, you know, revisiting this model, um, and looking, I think, build something around it as a state model. Um, there's a couple, only a couple, um, in the state right now, services that are using this community care medicine model. Um, so it's something that's happening that we're, we're trying to be aware of and, and see where if we can. Is that something that would work well for us out here? We, and I think we, it would. Um, we just need to know more about it and how to do it well. Yeah, as far as, uh, spring work and, and doing work on roads, again, Dan and I, um, trying to get a, a schedule worked out. Um, trying to coordinate with any local contractors that might be able to do some work while we're doing some other jobs. Um, you know, be able to get some of that done. One of the things that we were anticipating, focusing on is replacing culverts on around the island road. Um, in anticipation of some future paving, um, and, and, you know, within the next year. Um, so we do want to have an opportunity to get, get through and, and at least replace the culverts that need to be replaced through there and let. Let them settle us till they can settle, so when the pavement goes down, it doesn't sink right away. Um, give it a chance to compact and. Hopefully, you know, we'll be seeing probably a lot of work going on in the next two months, three months, uh, before the fiscal year end. So, other than that, um, just a matter of scheduling your next budget workshop. Eric had, you know, wanted to leave it off for today, but I don't know if you want to try and do it next week or wait till then, the twelfth?
But, well, the, we won't do it on the twelfth because that'll be our next regular schedule for the selectments meeting. I think last year's format worked quite well. We had a selectments meeting for, you know, the weekly business we need to take care of. And then a separate evening just for a workshop. We, you know, meet for a couple of hours and hammer throw it. And. But at this point in time, we need to wait, I think, for the budget committee to meet and make formal recommendations.
I think they were planning to meet at four on the, I think, the fifth, or no, maybe on the Monday, let me, um.
Do we do it all in one evening?
No, it'll take, it'll take us a couple.
They actually didn't have as, um, they had plenty of questions, but it didn't. Take nearly as long. They kind of went through everything they had questions about, and they mostly wanted to hear from what the school numbers might look like and. Again, what the valuation might look like. Okay, yeah, they were scheduled in the week of the twelfth. Um, but I can circle back with them. If they were to meet the, at the, the last time they met, they met at four. Um, they were to meet at four, would you want to meet at like, say, six? I think it was the same day. If it happened to work next Tuesday.
That's fine with me. We can have like a, you know, get it at six o'clock, have a stop on the seventh thirty.
We're just giving up an opportunity right after they, if, if they can meet that day to be able to. Follow up on anything they're, they're thinking of or, or trying to start that. I don't want to see you wait too long if we're trying to get the warrant presented.
Tuesday, the sixth, and Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Uh, it'd be the sixth.
Next Tuesday.
Not next week.
Oh, any day next week you're booked for the first.
No day next week.
It's April. Is that the first two weeks out for you?
Okay, so you won't be available next week anyway.
Next week, I can't. I could probably do something the following week.
We'll have our selectment meeting on the thirteenth, I believe.
Thirteen.
It's the thirteenth.
Yeah, I, I, next week I can't, I can't do it.
So we can either, if six o'clock is too late for people to start a meeting, we can even meet the day after. Um, we can meet next Wednesday, right? They, they'll meet Tuesday the fifth.
No, I can check with them if they can meet Monday, if you want to meet Tuesday or Tuesday, Wednesday, however.
Um, we can just meet the day after.
The seventh, I'm not, I've been loving the name, Lynn.
I'll see if I, I'll see if you guys want to meet the sixth and see if they can meet before that. Either the same day earlier or.
Yeah, if we, if we could meet on six, that, or at five thirty would be preferable.
When you do that.
You know, six to eight gets to be a little bit of a late evening for everybody.
Five thirty next Tuesday.
Yeah, this is May, that for all. Eight o'clock is bedtime.
Is it five thirty?
Yeah. And that's what I was going to bring up in my reported numbers. Are you done, Andy, with your report?
I am.
Okay, so I did, we received a letter. I didn't receive a letter. We all received a letter, uh. From Jackson Gregory, who lives on East Main Street. And. He has noted that, you know, there's been some speed limit signs that have been erected over the last, uh. Year or so, a couple of years. And he, um, is just letting us know that. Traffic there or past his home seems to go quite quick. I think we're all quite aware. And he's just asking for, that the town would be interested in erecting a couple. More speed limit signs along that stretch, one on the northeast corner of his property. Heading eastward direction. And then. On the hill coming out of Viking for traffic heading west, which.
I don't think there are any, there are no, uh, speed limit signs up to there anywhere.
There was.
Yeah.
It went in front of Grace Carter's still, correct?
Oh, I don't.
There's supposed to be a twenty mile an hour sign in front of Grace Carter's.
There was.
I don't know if it's still there, but it, it was there, you know.
At one point in time.
So it sounds like we.
Isn't that the school zone? Shouldn't they be going slow anyway?
During, during the, I think the presence of, of children or during the school hour, I believe.
And his.
No, it's fifteen.
Yeah, and his house is away from the school zone.
Not that much away.
I mean, I think, you know, communicating this with the concern with the resident deputy, um. Because at least two, if not three days a week that he's here generally during, when school might be happening, whether it's morning or afternoon. You could probably, you know, make more, more presence there. Um, the other thing I mentioned to Eric before the meeting was the, a couple of years ago, we had a speed trailer on loan from the, from the DOT and. I don't think, I don't know if they put those out last year, but I got the letter again this year. For any towns interested in having it, loaning it for a couple of weeks, and so I put in for it and. I think, um, based on a call I had, that we might, they might just, let's have one.
Don't get one that spells again.
It won't, it wouldn't be on a trailer, but, you know, we could deal with, deal with that. It would be the, the, the sign and the, the power system to. Work it. So if we have that, you know, that's something that ends up happening, um, we can make that work and be able to move that around if we want.
Yeah, that's something that would have to be stored at night, though, right? We don't want to leave that overnight, do we?
Uh, we did before, um, you know.
Just concerned that someone.
Yeah, speaking of, yeah.
Right, I mean, some of them have cameras on them, so if someone wants to do it, they'll be up. Um, so I don't know exactly what we're getting, but, um, we could, we could look to deal with that if we have to. I don't think anything happened to the trailer the first time we had it.
No, I don't.
Probably the last time we had it.
That's all I have. Anyone else have anything on your four numbers?
I just, I just, I, I have something, Eric, real quick.
Go ahead, Jake.
I didn't get a chance to bring it up, but when we're talking about all these capital projects, like with the dump and all this. Is there any grants for that, or are we going to try and? How, I mean, we've, and the paving on the dump road and all this, I mean, it seems like. We've already got a lot of money going out. I don't think people are going to be real happy if we do. Project after project after project after pro- I, I mean, I know that we've. In the past, we haven't done all these things and they're neglected, but, um. I mean, if we keep doing all these projects before we get some of these other things paid off, the. You know, those lines are going to be through the roof if we don't get, like, the grants that we're expecting and. All this stuff. So, I mean, I think we need to prioritize. You know, if we're going to pave the dump road, if we're going to fix the retaining wall, if we're going to do this or that, I mean, I don't think we can just throw a blank check at all this stuff. I don't know how we do it. I don't know how we do it. But it seems like we're talking about a lot of money. I mean, we're already spending a lot of money this year on. The capital projects that we have no matching grants for, and. I mean, we've got a lot of other things out there too, so we need to, we really need to come up with a way to prioritize. Which projects are going to be first, if it's going to be the sidewalk on High Street, if it's going to be the vinyl cove, if it's going to be this. We need to come up with a grading system or something, because. All these projects just boggle my mind about where is all the money going to come from? I mean, um, it just, it's kind of made me a little bit worried, especially with. Everything else that's going on. We just keep talking about spending, 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 but. We don't have any way to say which project goes first, which projects have to work, wait for another day, so I think we need to. Really consider either having a grading system or pri- priority system or. Um, I don't exactly know how to do it, but that's just kind of how I feel.
Have you done some priorizing?
Yeah, I think, you know, generally, we don't, we're not working out of a, a formal capital improvement plan, it's something that, you know, we've been wanting to put together and we should have. Um, and that would look at a, you know, probably a three to five year window. And I mean, you focus on the next kind of two year, maybe three year outlook, and every. Every year you had your fifth year back on, and so it, it kind of helps us, and I, so I started to create something like that last year for the budget process, because the committee members were. Seeing the same concerns. I mean, a lot of what, you know, Jake mentioned, the, the sidewalk in the vinyl cove project, you know, all we're asking for right now is for preliminary numbers. So those aren't happening next year, um, other than just to get a better sense of concept and cost potentially. Um, you know, but again, yes, probably something that's going to have to come, um, in the next few years. Um, hardware improvement, obviously. I mean, we're, unfortunately, we're at a point, again, also as Jake mentioned, the, around the island road and North Haven Road, I mean. There's not much we can do on those anymore from the road crews' perspective to, it's not catching a pothole in most places anymore. Um, you know, so the, you know, the only thing you can do on your roads, there is not funding for just regular paving of roads. Um, grant funding for that kind of stuff, unless, unless you're able to mitigate flood risk potentially and, and potentially find money for, for that. With, there is not a lot of adaptation, flood adaptation monies right now. Um, you know, so the only other option you have is to consider potentially. Looking to delay a, a paving project, but in the meantime, maybe you phase it and maybe you consider some roads. Being gravel for a short period of time while you prep and prepare to pave, um, and kind of choose, you know, take that on in smaller increments. Um, you know, if you're going to have to reclaim some of these roads. To reclaim, to build, to pave all in one year, I mean, that seems to take a lot of time anyways, out, out here. Um, you know, so we might, we could look at ways, and that's something Dan, Dan put in his report for next year, so. Have someone come out and give us a pavement preservation plan. You know, so you're, you're looking at the roads that need to get done, at the same time, the ones that should have been, needed to be done five years ago, frankly. You got ones that have been paved in the last seven years that you don't want to get to that point, right? So it is about, you know, putting that in a timeline that, you know, we can manage. The, the transfer station wall, we, you know, that's another situation where we have a report saying. It needs to be done. We have someone assess it for us. So, um, it's just a matter of the infrastructure at an age where. Unfortunately, it's kind of all coming up at one. Unfortunately, it's kind of all coming up at once. And then of course, there's equipment, there's trucks, there's vehicles that have to be replaced too. So. You know, we can certainly, we've talked about it with the engineers and with the folks at McCad about helping us put together a true capital improvement plan. So we can try and. Get that flushed out hopefully this summer, um, and, and present something that you guys can work towards having input on, come up with a way to grade and rank these things. Um, if that makes sense, that people can see. That, that works.
It's, and yeah, it's obviously our budget process is just barely begun and. I share same concerns as Jake, as I said at the previous meeting, I. Can't, I don't see myself voting in favor of a two hundred odd thousand dollar increase. Oh, you know, this year, but we'll have to obviously weigh what we know needs to be done versus. An unfair burden on taxpayers.
Yeah.
And, you know, I will have our workshop beginning next weekend. We'll have at least one more after that, if not two, I would imagine. We're just barely getting started because, yeah, there are some big asks here. They're all important. It's just. Money has to come from somewhere, without the federal government.
I share the same concerns about the cost. Only thing I would say is that I think because of neglect, because things have been pushed off for so long, some of these things are. Unfortunately, we have to do them now, which makes them more expensive because you don't get to plan to fix them over time. You have to do them right now or else the town's up for liability for someone getting hurt or killed or whatever it is. Um, so that's, we're kind of picking up some of the pieces that were left. For us to pick up and fix, unfortunately. Um, but yes, doesn't mean we should just be doing blank checks and everything. I, I agree with that as well.
Okay, I move, we adjourn. Seconded by Cam Alley. All votes in favor? And Jake?
Yes, sorry. I was trying to hit the button.
Have a good night, everyone. Thanks for joining us.